As we move over to our Committee of the Whole meeting this morning, we have an agenda in front of us. Does everybody have that in front? At this time, is there any declaration of peculiar interest to that agenda? Counsel Robinson?
Yes, Mr. Warden, thank you. I have an interest with regard to item 7A, which is the Gray Roots item, E D T C dash C W dash zero five dash twenty. My husband and I have a membership to Gray Roots Museum and Archive, and I am speaking with the Integrity Commissioner on this item as well.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Robinson, so we get to that point then. Okay, are there any other peculiar interests at this time? Okay? We have a consent... No, business arising, sorry. I need... So we have a notice of motion. So the notice of motion that was presented at their last council of 23rd by Counsel Millen has been withdrawn. So that's off. Our next notice of motion is with regards to Counsel Potter, and the motion is in our agenda. And so to get that on the books, we need a mover. So Counsel Potter, are you moving that? So Counsel Potter, do I have a second for that? Counsel Millen? All right, so Counsel Potter, do you wish to speak to that notice of motion?
There. Yes, if I may, do I need to read the motion? I wasn't quite clear, okay. So everyone's had a chance to read it. Essentially, what it's saying is that through the efforts of our council and our Treasury Department and our staff, we were able to gain back a tremendous amount of money through supplementary and omitted assessments. Some of that is very much to the benefit of Gray County, about $1.1 million. What we'd like is to get some of that back, and not just us, but all the municipalities in Gray County, if they undertake the same exercise and see benefits come back. We all know that attainable housing is a vital issue right now throughout the county. It certainly is in Blue Mountain. And if we don't address it and address it very soon, it's going... It already is an economic issue for us. It's taking away potential business from our community. It probably is doing the same thing in all of yours. So unless we find ways to address it and to fund it, we aren't going to be able to deal with it in a timely manner, and we're going to start losing economic opportunities within Gray County. So what we are hoping to do is to take some of this extra money, call it bonus money, if you will. I know there's no such thing as bonus money in municipal government, but if we call it that and put it to use to help us with the problem of attainable housing. That's simply what we're looking to do. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Potter. Counsel Millen, do you wish to speak to it as a second?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, I think the Town of the Blue should be commended for their efforts to pull this money into their coffers. And the purpose that they're proposing to use it for is a noble cause, and it is a well-needed money in attainable housing throughout the county, for that matter. So I would echo Counsel Potter's thoughts that we all need to be cognizant of the issue, and both issues, the tax issue and the attainable housing issue. And any efforts to remedy both is well-intentioned. So I take great pleasure in seconding the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Millen. Are there any other discussions to the motion? Counsel Kivini?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I would just like to add my congratulations to the Town of Blue Mountain for discovering this supplemental income and suggest through sitting on the workforce task force that was created to look at this problem and recognizing through the work that was done there the great need for affordable housing and knowing that at any given time at Blue Mountain Resort, they're probably short 500 to 800 workers, and that is simply because there is no place for people to live. And also recognizing that the Warden has created a task force here at Gray County to look at the issue of affordable housing throughout the county, then I think it's appropriate to support this request and to help the Town of Blue Mountains build the housing that is desperately needed there to bring workers into this community.
Okay, thank you for that, Counsel Kivini. Is there any other discussion here? Counsel Hicks, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. At the risk of sounding like a naysayer, I want to say I think we need to address the affordable and attainable housing issue. It's been on our radar for quite some time now, and I'm really happy to see that we have a task force that's going to be addressing that issue. That said, I'm not convinced that this motion before us today is the right way to address the attainable housing issue. I would make perhaps the point of fairness. I appreciate that the Town of Blue Mountain has been able to find this supplementary, if that's what we're calling it, taxes that weren't collected. But there are other municipalities, like the Town of Hanover, that were up to date. We didn't miss it. I don't know why it was missed in the Town of Blue Mountains, but for some reason it was missed, and they're catching it up. We've looked at our process, and there's nothing to be had. I mean, we're up to date. So the fairness would not be there in the sense that we wouldn't have the same opportunity to address the attainable housing issue in Hanover as the Town of Blue Mountains would have by being able to have this pot of money. I think the issue of attainable housing needs to be addressed. I would love to see us address the issue of attainable housing in the Town of Blue Mountains. I appreciate the challenge that is there. Just not convinced that this is the way to do it. I'm hoping that the issue can come to the attainable housing task force so that we can look at other avenues for addressing that issue.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Hicks. Deputy Warden, are there any other discussions? I don't know. Anything from you, Kevin, in the sense of the mouth or Madam CEO? Okay. Last call. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Okay, hang on. Do you want to help count? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight?
Eight.
Opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight?
Eight.
Nine. I think the motion is lost. So the motion is lost? Okay, so then our next... Sorry?
Can I request a recorded vote, please?
You can, before the next motion. So recorded vote is requested, Madam Clerk.
Okay, and I will call out each name, and then I will reconfirm so that the audience can hear us. In support of the motion, yes or no? Counsel Mackey?
Yes.
Counsel Gamble?
No.
I'm sorry. Counsel Mackey said yea. Counsel Gamble, no. Counsel Burley?
No.
Counsel Burley says no. Counsel Carlton?
No.
Counsel Carlton says no. Warden McQueen?
Yes.
Warden McQueen says yes. Counsel Desai?
Yes.
Counsel Desai says yes. Counsel Patterson?
No.
Counsel Patterson is no. Counsel Hicks?
Nay.
Counsel Hicks is no. Counsel Columbus?
No.
Counsel Columbus is no. Counsel Kivini?
Yes.
Counsel Kivini is yes. Counsel Boddy?
Yes.
Counsel Boddy is yes. Counsel O'Leary?
Opposed.
Counsel O'Leary is no. Counsel Woodbury?
No.
Counsel Millen? Counsel... Sorry. Thank you. Counsel Millen is yes. Counsel Potter? Or I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Counsel Sampson?
Yes.
Counsel Potter?
Yes.
Counsel Sampson is yes. Counsel Potter is yes. Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson is yes. Counsel Hutchinson?
No.
That's a recorded... That's a weighted vote.
Nope, it's a weighted vote. So we... The weighted vote, 48 yays, 42 nays. Motion is carried.
Well, if I didn't add some excitement to the morning, I don't know what she did. All right, so moving on then to C, notice provided by Counsel Potter. Do you wish to put this motion on the floor?
Yes.
Do I have a second to that notice of motion? Counsel Sampson? Okay, so Counsel Potter, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Just very briefly, that... And I think, again, this is something that could be of benefit to all the municipalities in Gray, is to have county representatives attend our Public Information Center regarding our budget. I know it was discussed by the Blue Mountains Task Force back in October, and the suggestion actually came from the county level, from county staff, that they have somebody show up with some information and perhaps some brochures to help our ratepayers understand where their county tax dollars go. I think that would go a long way toward alleviating some of the, can we call it, acrimony that people feel at this time. So I think it would be a great idea for the county to be involved at this level to address its ratepayers face-to-face and help provide more information.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Counsel Potter, Counsel Sampson, do you wish to speak to it as a second?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Well, I think the fact that there needs to be a bit stronger communication with the county and certain parts of our community in Blue Mountains is evidenced by the fact that, for the first time, I think, ever, we had the Ratepayers Group from the Blue Mountains make a presentation at the Committee of the Whole Budget Presentation. So clearly, the budget and how this money is being spent at the county level is on the radar screen of one of our two main ratepayer groups. In fact, I would argue it's on the second one as well because the previous Warden attended a meeting with that ratepayer group while it wasn't particularly around the budget issue, it was around the presence and what the county is doing and how it's spending its money across the county and also in the Blue Mountains. Forty-one percent of what a taxpayer pays in the Blue Mountains goes to local taxes or local spending. Forty percent, according to the rough numbers based upon the budget that we've just carried, of a person's tax bill in the Town of Blue Mountains will go towards the county. The balance will go towards education. The mill rate is effectively very close to our mill rate and will likely supersede that certainly. So the majority, or almost the majority, the largest component of the tax bill of a Blue Mountain ratepayer is being spent by this county here and this council here. And I think it would help if you communicated to that taxpayer base in the same form that we do, which is the public forum that we hold as part of our budget process. We have four days, four whole days of a budget review for our expenditure. Ratepayers demand that. We have a public meeting. We then have an information session that you're being invited to attend. Lots of opportunities to communicate to the ratepayers on how we, at the local level, are spending the money. Again, from the ratepayers' presentation here today on Friday, it's clear they have an interest in how we, here at this level, are spending their money. And I think an opportunity to participate with us in that information session would be helpful in getting the Gray County's presence raised a bit and to help local ratepayers understand where the money is going, why it's going, and where it's going, and what the future will hold for future spend. And to Counsel Desai's point, perhaps a much further discussion on infrastructure spending, which is critical to the growth that's feeding this increase in revenue that we're frankly spending here. So I would encourage support for this motion. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Counsel Potter. Madam CEO, do you wish to speak to it first?
So council is aware, as was noted in the remarks, this was something that was brought up at a task force meeting. Certainly, staff, myself specifically, will be available to do this if it's the direction of council. I would say I do find it somewhat disappointing that it comes to the fact of having to have a motion on the floor for something that I hope that we could all just have a conversation about. The question was asked, and the offer was made. And so I just... I wouldn't want anybody to think that, as staff, that we were in any way reluctant. We're here to serve you. We do the best that we can, and so... And we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam CEO, and I will echo the part as Warden I can make myself available to, if that's part of what needs to be done. Counsel Woodbury, I think you're next.
Thank you. That was pretty well my point. Anytime that we've asked staff from the county for assistance to meet, to come to us, us come to them, they've always been there. So I am really reluctant for us to get involved with telling staff exactly what meeting to go to unless there's a problem. To me, this is something that should be coming from the Town of Blue Mountains with staff going over it. It shouldn't be at this table. Anytime RCA is called, we've been able to arrange things with no issues whatsoever. So I think I agree with our staff being there, but I think this is something that could be handled at staff level, and if we get involved in this, we better book four days for each of our county council meetings because we're going to be booking all of your meetings.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Woodbury. And just before I go to other questions, to you, Madam CEO, and maybe to the Director of Finance or even our Communication Officer, when we pass our budget, what is our normal process of communicating our budget? How do we... Do we spell that out? Maybe Rob or somebody, just in the general practice that we do?
Go ahead, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Good morning, County Council. Our traditional practice is we do rely heavily on traditional media relations, so I rely on our friends in the back of the room over here to help us get the word out about what decisions have been made around this table. We do have the opportunity to kind of own our own messages as well. We push, put everything on our website. Anything that you see is available to the public, those summary documents, the detailed documents, all of that information. We rely heavily on social media as well. We get a lot of traffic on our Facebook page, and that's where we can kind of see the dialogue and public sentiment. But the biggest thing that we do really to push that out is our reliance on the media, so sending out media releases. And it does have a very high rate of being picked up because it does apply to all Gray County residents.
Thanks, Rob. And I caught your word, the friendly media? Do you have anything to add to that, Madam CEO? Okay, thank you very much for that, Rob. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just for clarification purposes, was there a request from Blue Mountains to have finance staff from Gray County attend at a meeting? And was there a response, a positive response? I'm just trying to figure out the reason for it being at a notice of motion stage as opposed to something that perhaps would be offered anyway to have more understanding of whether it is finance or social services or any other department. I know the flow of information, quite frankly, through Gray County and West Gray is very good. And just wondering if this is actually something that needs to be at a motion level.
Thank you, Madam CEO.
I'm afraid you will have to direct your question to your colleagues. I am not sure I know why this is a notice of motion this way. Certainly, as I said, not only did we offer at the task force that we would meet, but as well after the presentation at the budget, we spoke to the folks who had come for the delegation and also offered ourselves as staff, myself, Pat, Randy, et cetera, to meet directly with them and to try and correct some of the information that was there.
So before I go to Counsel Woodbury, Counsel Sampson, you add some clarity?
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Sampson?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. Well, this item did come up at the task force, and I'm glad, maybe I'm glad we're dealing with the task force as a separate item because I thought it was suggested at the task force that the direction of county council was required if staff were to participate in our information session. Well, that's why we're here, asking for this motion to be tabled. So maybe there is something wrong with the task force because if we can't get very simple items like this done, then perhaps something needs to be done to fix that. But this was clearly raised at the task force. We'd like to invite staff members to attend our information session along with local town staff members. And it was suggested that the direction of council was required to do that. Well, that's what this motion's trying to do. So that's why we're here, and that's why this motion is on the floor. We're responding to what a collective decision was made and directions was given at the task force meeting.
I think that was sort of captured in the minutes of that task force, too, right? So... And I think just from being at that, I think it was to a higher level of request versus probably maybe the normal request that would be maybe assisted or whatever. Counsel Woodbury, you actually wanted to follow up?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Kevin said about the information. We sitting around this table are representing Gray County. It's up to us as well to pass along the information. I don't know about anyone else, but I, for one, my budget binder from Friday is, and with the documents, is sitting on our treasurer's desk so that he could share pertinent information with our staff. So as well as what the county's doing for handing them out, I think we, as representatives, have an obligation to our member municipalities to pass on that information and make that information available.
Absolutely. We're the spokespersons for Gray County, along with being a representative, for sure. Counsel Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I've... Since we spoke about the budget on Friday till today, I've seen at least three, four different sources that have posted the press release and the communication around the budget on social media, at least. Owen Sound Hub was one of them that I know of. I tried to look on Simco.com, but it told me I reached my article limit, which apparently is one. So I couldn't confirm. But having said that, I am reluctant to direct staff to go to a particular public meeting because that sets a precedent. And there is nine municipalities around this table. I don't want to end up in a position where, for half a year, staff are spending more time preparing and going to public information centers. If there are scheduled permits and they're... Then they can go, sure. This makes it a direction that they have to follow because it's coming from this body. And further, Counsel Sampson mentioned about having a conversation around investment in infrastructure. I tried having that this morning, and it didn't go very well. So I don't know if he's trying to be optimistic or otherwise, but there it is.
I'm not sure, Counsel Desai, if you were too close to the water or too close to the sun, but... Madam CEO?
I wanted to be sure that I hadn't misspoken or misled you at all, so I went back to the minutes from October the 24th. And at that, the minutes reflect that discussion as CAO Wingrove suggested that Gray County staff be present at the Blue Mountains Budget Public Information Center to answer any questions from the taxpayers as well as preparing an insert to be included in the tax bills that are mailed out. Committee concurred that this would be most helpful to the residents to have an insert in their tax bills and to also include contact names and numbers of county staff should any resident of the Blue Mountains have inquiries that can be answered directly from county staff.
Thank you for that, Madam CEO.
Sorry.
Thank you, Madam CEO, for that. So any further discussion or questions? Counsel Columbus?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I see this as an operational issue. I don't see this as an issue that needs to come before county council at this level. I think that our county staff have been more than forthcoming and willing and able to come out at any time to any of our issues in the municipality of Meaford, and I see them frequently at other community events and issues as well. So I see that this is not necessary to come to the council. It is an operational issue, and obviously, it has been extended according to the minutes we've just heard. So I think that it's a noble idea and should happen, and I think if staff are invited, as the CAO has indicated, they would be there, and there would be no issue with that.
Thank you for that, Counsel Columbus. Any further conversations, discussions? Seeing none, the motion is on the floor. For the notice of motion, there's a move in second. All in favor? Opposed? That motion, notice of motion is lost. Madam Clerk, we have a delegation scheduled for 9:50.
So Marlene's going to introduce Dana Leach from the Health Unit.
Okay. All right, so we'll move forward with that delegation. And Marlene, I think you're going to do the introductions. Welcome. Come on up. Just make sure you push your mic there.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for having us here this morning. So this presentation, there's two parts to it, and I'm going to pull up the rear. So the beginning will be presented by the Public Health Unit, and it's going to be Dana Leach. Dana is a Public Health Manager of Infectious Diseases. So if Dana would come forward?
Good morning, everyone. I just want to thank the council for having me today to talk about the 2019 novel coronavirus. And perhaps some of you are already aware that as of earlier this week, the name has been changed to COVID-19. So what I want to talk to you about today is just give you a bit of an overview about what the disease is, what we're talking about in terms of COVID-19. I want to give you a bit of a situational update in terms of what we're seeing today, not only in Gray Bruce, but globally. I'll give you a bit of an update. I want to let you know what we're doing in public health to prepare and to respond and to have a look at what that means for us in Gray Bruce. And I want to just briefly talk about considerations from public health for the municipalities. And I know Marlene's going to get into a bit more detail about that. And certainly, both myself and Dr. Era, as our Medical Officer of Health, is here if you have any questions. So first off, what is COVID-19? It's part of the coronavirus. It is a coronavirus. Excuse me, pardon me. It is a coronavirus, and it's part of a family of viruses, and it comes from the common cold. I mean, we have coronavirus, the common cold type of virus, circulating in our community at present. But it also can be broader than that. It can be more severe and cause respiratory infections like bronchitis, pneumonia. And it is the virus that was responsible for SARS, sudden or severe acute respiratory syndrome. It spreads mainly from person to person through close contact. And I think that's really important to know that it's... You know, if you've been in a mall, if you've been in an airport and have heard about it, it's truly close contact. So we'll talk a bit about that. It does have greater impact for those who are more likely to... Like more susceptibility to those who have a weakened immune system, and that includes our older population, or people with chronic disease, for example, diabetes, cancer, heart, renal, or chronic lung disease. So the COVID-19, and that's... I'm still working around getting that new name. So the COVID-19 is a respiratory infection that originated in Wuhan, China. We first were made aware, certainly Public Health Ontario was giving us information about what was happening in the world, and we were being alert to seeing what this might mean for us. But it wasn't until January 25th that we were made aware of it and also that it came to Ontario and that there was evidence of human-to-human transmission. But I want to stress that the majority of cases are global cases, and particularly, those are related to mainland China. are related to mainland China or travel to and from mainland China. So I wanna talk to you a bit about what that looks like today, and to give you that perspective, uh, before I click on to the world, and that is a map that is, um, put on, uh, by John Hopkins through a variety of different data sources, but I wanna put it into perspective. Globally, again, you will see on this map that there is a significant amount of cases that are happening in mainland China. Um, in Canada, presently, there are seven confirmed positive cases, and that is for those Canadians who are presently in the country, and there are four in British Columbia, three in Ontario. Again, in Ontario, you would've heard, probably through, um, media, um, and also through public health press releases, that we have had th- three confirmed positive cases. Two were in Toronto, directly related, and one in London. And since, uh, those folks are no longer hospitalized or receiving any sort of care, and in Gray Bruce, we have zero cases. So I'm going to go to the link with Terrace Help here. You've got it? There we go. I'm gonna back up. This dashboard, it will take a few minutes to load, but this is available, um, it is, for those of you who could see the link, but it does give you an up-to-date, uh, scenario of the cases, and you'll see that there are a total of 60,360 cases worldwide. Um, with the bulk of those, you'll see in that lower number, where my arrow is, that 59,823 are in mainland China. And we'll scroll down and see that, uh, there is still, remains seven cases in Canada and three in Ontario. There is presently 1,370 deaths worldwide. This is what public health is looking at, um, both federally and provincially, that's influencing some of our decisions and discussions, but again, you can see just by the heat map of sorts with the, uh, red area that there is a bulk still maintains in mainland China. Minimize that. So I wanna let you know, with that information about what that happens, knowing that we presently had three cases in Ontario and, and, um, no, no cases in Gray Bruce, that doesn't mean that we aren't doing something to be prepared. So I wanna let you know that we are having regular communications with the province through teleconferences, and that is happening regularly, um, and we are also having some additional cases with the, uh, case consults with the ministry. We're also sharing provincial guidance documents and consulting with healthcare partners, and that includes all of the hospitals in Gray Bruce, our primary care physicians, our community care, including our long-term care partners, as well as paramedics. We did work locally, and again, you'll have known through our press release that we had a person under investigation, and that we included working with hospital and the provincial lab to manage that, uh, recent person under investigation, and I felt really good about the way that, uh, our partnerships worked in public health and being able to communicate and respond, and that happened quite quickly, and, uh, as a result, we indicated that we were not, uh, we did not have a, a positive case. We've also been communicating with the education sector, as you can imagine, uh, there's a lot of questions out there. We've been communicating with workplaces who have, um, uh, employees who may be doing some business travel abroad. Um, we've been working with municipalities and, and county C, the C E M Cs, and, uh, been in contact with Marlene, um, answering some questions and wondering, um, you know, what the so what at this particular time, um, and what are the implications for municipalities. We've also been talking with our general public, and that's through press releases, consultations, our helpline that we ha- um, have every day that we're available, um, and also our website, trying to provide information about what this means for us, knowing what's going on in the world, um, with coronavirus. And we're also talking, uh, and preparing ourselves internally, and I'll give you a little bit more about what we're doing there. We have established an incident management team, and I, through the I M S structure, um, with Dr. Era, our M O H, uh, leading the incident, uh, incident situation, as we inform ourselves and be prepared. I think that's part of it, understanding what, what that looks like. We have our physician consultant, Dr. Lena Lee, also part of that team, Drew Ferguson with Communications, and Andrew Barton with the Emergency Manager, and myself as the Infectious Disease Manager, just taking a look at what this might mean to us as an organization, and how we can support the community. We have actively tracking the situation daily, hourly, um, with the benefit of all of the data that's being presented to us. We are doing risk assessments. What does that look like, again, with any, uh, we do get consults and calls from physicians and, and support that risk assessment, especially this time of year when people are traveling a lot, like, you know, to Cuba and warmer weather, um, and the ability to say, I've been in the airport. There's a lot of, of concern and fear, and what we've been doing is trying to really take a look, is this a risk? And as, as you can imagine, the risk for us here in Gray Bruce, um, at the present time, is influenza. We have 71 cases of influenza, so I'm hoping everyone has had their flu shot and are certainly practicing, um, tho- those things to re- decrease the risk for our community. But we do take a look at risk assessment, because it is new, it is novel, and we wanna know what this means for us. And then, more internally with my team, the Infectious Disease Team, we are looking at what this might mean with the case. We, we are having regular meetings, situational assessment meetings. We are preparing ourselves for what we need to do, um, in the event that we do had, have an active case, and our case management, um, is very structured. Uh, we have provincial documents and guidance and an information, the I F A S system, which is an integrated public health information system, where we connect with our, uh, fellow health units in the province, and also that goes directly up to the federal government if need be. And at this time, I feel really confident the team is prepared. We manage cases, um, and are prepared for things such as Ebola. Um, we, the team is well-informed, well, um, well-prepared to do some case management. We're also know what ca- contact management looks like, and recognizing that the coronavirus is about, um, close contact, and often, just the casual contact. Right here, right now, um, I am not infectious to anybody, as long as you don't touch this podium, and certainly, I don't have anything at the present time, but this is not close contact, and being in a room with me is, if I were to have it, is not a risk. Um, and I think that's what we really have to define and reduce some of that angst, and to recognize what close contact looks like. Um, but we are, absolutely are prepared with the guidance documents from the province in terms of what that contact management looks like. And I would suggest the team is also pretty busy, managing existing respiratory and influenza outbreaks, as well as some gastrointestinal outbreaks, which are not uncommon, like, you know, in terms of our institution in this time of year. Obviously, we would like less, and our messaging continues to the public, is to stay home if you're sick, um, and please hand wash. So, and then, the other thing we're doing internally is, we are taking a look at the personal protective equipment and what we may have available, and what we, that's part of our general preparedness, and ensuring that we are in a place where we can support the residents of Gray Bruce, um, then, if the need arises. And so I offer this to you as, um, uh, the council and what you may consider for your municipalities from a public health point of view. I would encourage you to review and assess the readiness of your present emergency or pandemic response plan. We are not in a pandemic, uh, according to the World Health Organization. There is an epidemic happening. We're not in that phase where we have to take a look at it, but that's what we do in preparing and, and ensuring we're in a place where we are ready. I would encourage the prevention of spread of disease for staff, and that is influenza and other diseases ongoing. I think that should be a messaging all, all throughout, um, what we're doing, not just at moments like this. It then becomes routine, and then it becomes something we don't have to worry about. And further messaging, sort of, in, in terms of what we hope that you are able to support from public health, for your messaging, ensure that it's timely and that it's credible. There's a lot of information out there that can be frightening for folks, um, and to make sure that the information we have i- is credible and consistent with the public health messaging. Um, and if you need any help with that, please don't hesitate to call. We'll certainly be able to support you with, uh, any information that you may require. There may come a time where, um, municipalities are required to follow the, our Medical Officer of Health recommendations, directives, or orders, and requests may be provided, but we're not in a place where that's happening, but just so you know, that's the role of public health. And, uh, we encourage you to follow public health updates and guidance, and, uh, I know your C E M Cs are receiving some of our information, um, and we've set that up and, and certainly been connecting with, uh, Kevin through his paramedic, uh, Marlene, and, and Jennifer through the long-term care, so that's really quite positive. Um, do take a look at your inventory of personal protective equipment in, though, particularly those who have a long-term care, um, E M S. I think we know, because of some of the situations, it ca- has caused angst, and there's people purchasing P P E, so we just wanna make sure that you will have P P E for when you need it, and I make reference to some gastrointestinal outbreaks and influenza outbreaks that are happening. I think we need that P P E regardless. That's just good practice, that's good infection control. Uh, again, assess that level of envi- environmental cleaning. Uh, it's an envelope virus, and, um, and I think, you know, take a look, is, uh, influenza, what kind of cleaning product do we have? Is that cleaning, um, is that adequate in, in our facilities? Um, and identify areas of potential spread of infection during outbreaks, whether it be, um, COVID-19 or anything else. What could we do in terms of gathering and events, and how could we prevent the spread more generally, broadly, um, and how can we ensure that our, uh, Gray Bruce residents are the healthiest they can be? Now, there's also an important thing, that you do wanna take a look at community partners and lists. These are times where, all of a sudden, you need those lists, and you realize that maybe you have an out-of-date list. So now's the time, take a look at those contact lists that you have in your plans, um, who's, who, uh, who is, who are your partners? What are their roles? Um, what might we need? And I wanna encourage you to explore a little bit broadly, and, uh, say, in the event that we would have, um, COVID or otherwise, are we prepared, uh, as a municipality, to tackle and, and protect? And then, the other part, I wanna just bring it down to what we encourage you to do as an individual. Stay informed. The province does have that, a website, um, about the updates of, um, uh, COVID-19 and what that means for residents of Ontario, and I encourage you to prevent the spread of germs that cause respiratory illness. Wash your, uh, hands with soap and water, if you don't have that alcohol-based, um, sanitizer. Sneeze into your, and cough into your sleeve. It's really important. We've been teaching that to young people. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, or mouth. Now, man, we do this a lot. Uh, I think that's really important, that we know those are the source of entry. Um, viruses need a susceptible host, and they need a port of entry, and I have really been conscious of doing that. I sat in a meeting and I watched 22 times, and I think we do that. So that's something we can all do, is touch our face, our eyes, our nose, and mouth a little less, and avoid contact with people who are sick. I think that's what we can do. We wanna encourage that in our long-term care homes, in our meetings, in our, in our outings. If you're not well, please do, uh, what's best for you, and keep it to yourself, stay home, and, uh, and I think that's also a messaging as employers that we need to support for people to stay home if they are ill, and I think going forward, all of these, regardless of whether it's in the context of COVID-19 or where we are now, which is, uh, with cold and flu being our biggest outbreak in Gray Bruce, I encourage you to stay healthy, um, reduce your risk of infectious diseases, and if there is anything else that we can support you with in this particular situation, don't hesitate to reach out to the Infectious Disease Team, to the Health Unit more, uh, broadly. Uh, any questions?
Well, thanks, uh, Denna, and, uh, and thank you for your presentation and everything you do. Uh, you so, you know, you're, you're a wealth of information, and that's, that's fantastic. Uh, questions? Counsel Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and it's not necessarily a question, but I do wanna thank, uh, you folks for the, uh, presentation, uh, and I honestly think that the best thing we could do to help reassure people would be to blow up Facebook. I had no idea there were so many doctors circulating in the community.
Yeah. I, I take it you don't subscribe to Facebook? Just, just, just LinkedIn? Was there somebody else, uh, any other? Okay. Okay, guys. Who else? Any other comments? Dr. Era, do you?
I just wanna start by thanking Denna and her team. Uh, they're burning the candle at both ends. Public health managers are on call periodically. I know she's been on call for at least six weeks. On a weekend, late at night, I get updates and we communicate about this. As a Medical Officer of Health, I am concerned about the situation. You know, we're not gonna sugarcoat it. We have robust systems in place to deal with, uh, response to emergent disease. Many people, it's novel, and to many people, novel means new. In public health, we have protocols that are well-established to deal with emergent disease, and this is what it is, emergent or re-emergent. So, our response in general has two, uh, two categories. One, containment. The other one is, if the cats are out of the bag and it's spread in the community, it will be flattening the curve, flattening the wave. Uh, when you look at the number of cases, it will take sh- shape of a pyramid. So if we flatten it, that, that would be huge things to reduce the burden on the healthcare system. So there are two phases here. The containment phase, I am very confident we have the best system there is, and, uh, if cases come sporadically, we can contain them, no question. The, the science that we're learning about this virus points out that it is less deadly than SARS. SARS is 10% fatality rate. This one is, the numbers are around 2%, but if you adjust for the number of cases that we didn't test, we didn't find, it's gonna be way less, maybe two in a thousand, uh, close to influenza. So, all in all, uh, the, the, uh, behavior of this, um, virus is exhibiting at this point, and this is changing, is similar to influenza. So if it arrives and establish itself, probably, it's gonna be spread in the community, and at that time, our response would be to flatten that wave, and we, we have tools to do this. Currently, the risk is low, and we're working to keep it low, and, uh, I can, I can say, in the first phase and the second phase, uh, an essential thing that we all can do, and the public who can hear us, I know many people attend to listen to these meetings, is what the public can do, what the personal, individual person can do, to wash our hands, to refrain from touching our face, all the good things that we know about other respiratory disease. And, uh, uh, basically, the, the two, just to be complete, and why I do believe, and it's my own bias and many other people in the field, that this disease might present itself as community spread, similar to influenza, two things, the human-to-human, uh, transmission, and the asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic, um, cases, where a person is, has no symptoms, but is infected or she's infected and can spread it to other people. So all in all, the risk is low in Gray Bruce, and we're working to keep it low, and it's in the hands, literally, in the hand washing of the public.
Well, thanks, uh, Dr. Era, and I guess I'm just gonna make a, a relationship. There was a, an out, um, epidemic, is it was just after the First World War, was it the Spanish Flu? Right? But because today we have communication, we're probably much, much more educated today than 100 years ago, where you don't have the communication and that stuff, so probably from a containment and, and you're starting to, where back then, there was nothing, really. I guess what you had, just read in the headlines, I don't know if you have any response to that, but...
Certainly, communication is, is, uh, part of the many interventions that we have. It's a trade-off. Back in the day at that time, there was no, not much travel comparing to today. Today, a person can, within one week, travel to six, seven, uh, countries and spread it, and we, we heard in the news about these cases. Um, it's, it's a different scenario at that time. There was no vaccine for influenza. I guess it's, there is no vaccine for, for this bug at this time. All in all, I would say the risk at this point for Gray Bruce, that's our mandate, is low, and we are working to, to keep it low. Uh, if I may take one, one more minute, just to emphasize on what Denna said about the transmission, uh, in close contact means touching or, uh, sharing, uh, personal items. It does not happen in, in a setting like this between me and you. And, and to, to my dismay, you would hear in, uh, in the news about two events that really lend themselves to the ignorance that some people have. Uh, one of them is pranksters, and many people make the joke that, you know, yesterday, I think there was a case where somebody picked up the phone and said, "Oh, I was diagnosed with coronavirus," in the middle of a cafeteria. Every person in that cafeteria is gonna be concerned. Some of them are gonna be calling the system, and that's gonna ignite a cascade of events. Like, many of our staff will be busy just following that, that event to actually make sure people are not, uh, infected and they're comfortable with the decision. And the second, uh, event that lends itself to this is the stigma. Uh, historically, with SARS, there was stigma against certain nationality, which is the same nationality in this case, uh, and, and it's really not related to ethnicity in any way. It's related to travel, and not every Chinese-Canadian have traveled to Canada, to China. Some of them never stepped in, in China. So it, uh, any person can carry it when it arrives. Uh, if it arrives and I'm sick, I'll be spreading it to whomever I'm not careful, uh, sharing personal info, uh, personal items with or space with. Anyways... Anyways, I just want to reassure the public, the risk is low at this point, and we can all work to keep it low.
Well, thank you, and keep up the good work. Marlene, I think you have a presentation from the county's perspective, is that right?
Yes, I do. I just need to find it. Oops. I think that was probably the most exciting part of the two presentations, so I probably will be fairly brief. But I'm really here to assure all of council that Gray County does have a pandemic plan. And I'm just going to give you a little history on it. And so I needed to put this picture up there, because you might know a couple of the people. So this dates back to 2005, and we held an emergency exercise that featured a pandemic-influenza scenario. There were about 90 people that were involved. It was quite an interesting exercise. And so the folks who you may recognize, to the left is Drew Ferguson from the Health Unit. And right front and center is our very own Heather Morrison. She was the deputy clerk at the time. And she maybe not so fondly refers to this picture as the duck face picture. So I think she actually got a kick out of it, that I was going to put it in this. And the lady on the right was, is Joan Edworthy, and she was the former clerk's assistant at the time. So we started in earnest into pandemic planning in 2006, after the municipality of Meaford had brought forward a resolution suggesting that the county should actually be the ones who put together the pandemic plan, and then we would fan it out to all the municipalities to use as a template, a guide. And so we worked with a consultant. And funnily enough, I actually found one who would work with us for free, because the budget was pretty small for emergency management, as it usually is in most of our municipalities. So he helped us through that process of putting the template together. Once the template was done, we presented it to county council and we shared it with all of your municipalities. And that meant that now the real work began of using the template to plan for such an event. And so I can't speak to what each of the municipalities may have done that you're with, but you can go back and ask them. I know that here, our first step was to put together a large working group of staff, probably 15 to 18 people. It was all senior staff. Some of them were administrative and some of them were operational, gave a good mix. And we went through the process. And it was kind of long, and it is difficult to fit in tasks like this on top of everybody's already busy schedule. But it was a priority then, and it's obviously even more of a priority now as we go through and update it. At the time, we also formed a multi-stakeholder group that we met with periodically. They were external stakeholders that included community partners, businesses, and I would include that funeral home directors, facility managers, all kinds of folks were involved in those discussions. And it was really meant to just encourage the planning to take place everywhere, not just in government, but that businesses and our community partners would understand the kinds of things we were looking at, so that they could also consider those. So the first objective of our planning guide is to ensure that the critical services, the most critical services that we provide to the public are preserved in the event of a pandemic. And the most notable ones would be long-term care, of course, paramedic services, transportation services, social services, and housing. Now, not all of the services that some of those departments provide are necessarily deemed critical. And some of those would have to be stepped down during a pandemic situation, but that is what the plan itself goes through and determines, which are the things you can set aside for now and catch up on later, and which are the things that we've just got to say, "All hands on deck." We're going to, for example, go to one of the long-term care homes, and we need cooks, so we're going to send some staff there, that kind of thing. The second objective of the guide was to make sure that municipalities understood what a response to a pandemic emergency looks like, because it is different than other typical types of emergencies that we think of, like tornadoes and floods and so on. So one difference is that it is a top-down emergency rather than bottom-up. And by that, I mean, if there is a fire or an ice storm or something within your municipality, your responders are the first ones to respond. They're aware of the impact, and you are the ones that are responding first. You're also the ones that are going to run out of resources first, and it is impacting just your municipality, or perhaps a little bit bigger area, but it's more confined. So therefore, we say bottom-up, because the lowest level of government, or the lower tier, is the first one to declare, followed by other levels if necessary later. In an emergency that involves a pandemic, it would be the province that would declare first. You wouldn't see this pop up just in Owen Sound all of a sudden without it having been caught somewhere else. So that's what I mean by top-down. It's also a public health emergency, which is different from many that we are used to thinking of. And so that means at your emergency control group tables, public health is going to be the lead at those tables. They're going to have significant information that you are going to want to use to guide how you're going to operate. It's also going to be more widespread. We think of an ice storm that can be widespread over a spance of perhaps a few counties, maybe even a province. But with a pandemic, it can be global, as we're observing, watching carefully what's going on. And then the potential scale of disruption is immense, as we're also watching in China right now, just how that can affect so many things, right down to masks and the supply of masks. If they're made in China, are we able to get them here? There's one potential thing. Activation of the plan is pretty straightforward. So once a pandemic is imminent, our medical officer of health will notify both the Bruce and Gray County warden. And then, depending on the extent of the disruption locally here, and also how virulent the virus is, the Gray County Emergency Control Group will meet to determine their next steps, coordinate a response, and so on, when it's appropriate. So as far as the plan itself, right now, so you need to be aware that since it was created back in 2006, 2007, and it was also created specific to an influenza pandemic, some of the things are not necessarily still pertinent or pertinent to this situation. So generally speaking, we can use the pandemic planning guide to guide us through this situation that we're planning for right now. But there are things like references to influenza and Tamiflu that don't apply, and we're still waiting to see exactly what kind of pattern this new virus is following, whether it would be similar to a flu pandemic, or if it would be a bit different. And certainly, we look to the health unit to provide us guidance on that, as they are watching it every day. So where there is no guidance existing in the plan that we're using, we do look to the health unit and to other authorities, such as the province, who are providing us with information. County departmental activities have started in terms of planning for the pandemic, and that's, there's a lot of major updating activities going on. Again, as I said, nobody really has time for emergency planning, but this is significant and it is a priority, and so everyone has been making time for it. So it involves identifying all the services that we have and then categorizing them into essential or non-essential. We're making sure that we have standard operating procedures in place, written ones, so that we can redeploy staff if needed. And those standard operating procedures will guide them through how to perform the tasks that will support the essential services. So we're working on identifying which staff would be eligible for redeployment. And those would be the folks who are not necessarily providing what we consider essential services. So the non-essential services, they would be set aside during that period, and we could still use those staff members to keep going. We're also looking at day-to-day succession planning. If a director or a manager is away, do we have procedures in place that make sure that the next person knows that they should take responsibility and what those things are? We're reviewing meeting methods, trying to reduce the need for face-to-face meetings. If we get into this pandemic situation, we would be looking to use virtual meetings where meetings are necessary. And in many cases, meetings would be suspended, and lots of those meetings could be done by email or telephone. Looking at the supply chains, making sure that we have alternate suppliers for materials and supplies that are necessary, materials and services that are part of essential services, and stocking up on any critical supplies, if appropriate and if possible. And we're also reviewing and revising our strategies to limit the exposure to staff and visitors. And I think that the folks from the health unit have already covered that quite well. We're keeping track of the things that they're recommending. In addition to internal planning, we're going back to that model of involving external stakeholders. On March 5th, we're going to hold a meeting here. We're inviting a large number of community partners, local municipalities, and it's going to be co-led by Gray County and the Gray Bruce Health Unit. And so the partners involved are partners that long-term care works with, the social services works with, housing, and paramedic services. And then as far as the municipality, we will be having all of your CEMCs, the Emergency Management Coordinators, invited, as well as your human resources staff, because health and safety plays a big role in helping make sure that your plans are being followed and being in place. And just, I wanted to make note that I did earlier this week, send out our plan to all of the CEMCs at all of the municipalities, in case they had lost track of it over the years. And so I'll be touching base again with them when we invite them. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Marlene, and thanks for that presentation. It's always good to be prepared. Are there any questions from county councillors? All right. Well, thank you very much then. So we do have one more delegation, and that was with regards to Mr. Leach. Would you like to come forward? And then after that, we'll take a break. And this is with regards to the Sawgiung Valley Children's Safety Village. So, Al, the floor is yours. Just hit your mic there to turn it on.
Chair of the municipality?
Maybe Rob's going to help you up there.
Well, thank you, councillor Warden, McQueen, and councillors. First of all, thank you very much for the invitation to be here. Secondly, I want to apologize to those of you who may have seen part of this presentation once or twice before, but I'm really pleased to be here. I want to thank councillor Gamble. He's been aware of this program from its inception, and that was 10 years ago. The Sawgiung Valley Children's Safety Village is a registered Canadian charity. We're operating out of West Gray at the former, or at Sulphur Spring Conservation Area. For those of you who had not had an opportunity to visit the village, I do have a presentation here. Hopefully, it works. If I can find out how to move to the next slide. Anyways, if you don't have a visual, you may don't understand what the program is all about. But the intent of the program is to provide hands-on safety training to kids from kindergarten to grade six. We did a bit of a review. Gray County has about 7, 7,500 children in that category, about age four to 11. And there's an opportunity here to provide that hands-on safety training to them. This is important information, and a lot of it is being done by your fire services and your police services right now, but they're restricted, they're limited in their ability to get to all the children and all the schools. Marilyn and I actually met with your fire prevention officers last week in Meaford. The fire chiefs and the fire prevention officers will be holding their next meeting at the Children's Safety Village. Anyways, our, one of our themes is, if you could make the difference in the life of a child, would you? In our intent, if we can save the life of a child or prevent serious injury to one child, then we have made a difference in the county. So as a lot of you are aware, 95% of the injuries that occur to children across Canada are considered to be preventable injuries. And so those are the ones that we want to address, we can keep those children alive and on a hospital situation. That is our aim. We look at thousands of children having an opportunity to go through this particular program, and we're looking at eventually having about 10,000 children. And that's not a made-up number. This number came from the boards of education that we initially met with, and some of the other villages in Ontario are putting upwards of 16,000 children through their program each year. This is not a competitive market. This is a not, we are not-for-profit, we are not charging the children to attend. And these villages that operate across Ontario share all of the information that they have. They have been a fantastic resource for us as we started this initiative a while back. So we're not in competition with them. They share any information, some of the do's and don'ts, and some of the values that they have come across. This is the building. If those of you may be familiar, this is the former administrative building of the Sawgiung Valley Conservation Authority. And we have taken over this building and we have modified that for our own purposes. I'm just going to run you through some pictures. That's our logo inside the building. We have, you'll see some names here, these are some of the sponsors that we have that have helped us along the way. We've had to raise in excess of a million dollars to launch this program off the ground. And that's all been done by Marilyn, myself, and other person, as volunteers. This is what we call the unity room. There's opportunity for sponsorship. We have bike helmets for all the children, so that any child that attends the program, and if they're riding a bike or on a scooter, a helmet would be provided to them. We have a conference room. I'm a little partial, being a Lions member, but the Lions of Gray, all of Gray and Bruce County came together, and we've had over, well over $50,000 donation to sponsor a conference room, hence the theme of the Lions of Madagascar. We have washroom facilities, they're handicapped accessible. We totally gutted the former administrative building. We had to come up to current building code, and, you know, we've had to deal, we've had an engineering firm, an architect onboard to get this in place. This is the entrance to our fire and paramedic classroom. What I forgot to mention, there's sort of three components to the Safety Village, physical components. One is this fire, paramedic, and men building. One is our community police services building. And the other one is the miniature building itself, and I'll show you that in a moment. But this is the entrance into our fire, paramedic classroom. This is the classroom as it is set up right now. We do entertain adult groups in there. We've had a lot of, a lot of organizations have used this as a meeting space, and we welcome that. And I'll digress a bit right now. If any of you have not been there and you would like a personal tour, give myself or Marilyn a call. We are more than happy at any time to take you through the Safety Village. We're quite proud of what we've been able to accomplish there. This is just another view of the classroom, just from another area. We've got some of our sponsors up on the wall, they're in the top right-hand corner. Their names are recognized in water droplets, and you can see Sparky in the background. And the next room we're entering into, sorry. We did do some launch last October. Marilyn organized some super safety days, and with the support of some of our local, well, this is Ken Dettinger from the Hanover Fire Chief, local fire department, local fire, or police services supported us. All of our board members were there for the day. We wanted to test our program and see how well it went. It went so smoothly, we were just absolutely astounded that we had no hitches in the day. But we had, we ran about half a dozen classes through the village. This is just some of the fire safety classroom pictures that were taken that day. This is Sparky's kitchen, sponsored by Germania Insurance. Now, this is Sparky's bedroom and part of the, some of the safety demonstration apparatuses that we have in place for teaching. This is Sparky's bedroom. This has been sponsored by Bruce County, sorry to say that out loud, but sponsored by Bruce County Fire Chiefs and their mutual aid society. but sponsored by Bruce County Fire Chiefs and their Mutual Aid Society. Over $50,000 helped sponsor putting this evacuation bedroom together. The idea is just to create a little bedroom that the kids are familiar with. This room will actually be filled with smoke. And the kids will actually evacuate out through the window. And again, it's hands-on, interactive training. You can sit home and talk to your children and your grandchildren, or put them in a classroom setting and say to them, "Okay, if you have smoke, get down on your hands and knees and crawl. Get out the window." What the fire departments have told us, these children hide in the closets under the bed. They're frightened. We put them through this process once or twice where they actually climb out of a window with the fireman. And you'll see in some of that previous picture, we actually had the firemen there with their regalia on so the children can learn that fireman is their friend and not to be frightened of that individual. This is formerly the resource center, it's now our community police services classroom. We needed both buildings, we had enough classroom space. So this is a room that we'll use for our internal instruction, for our police services work. Could be anti-bullying, allurement, traffic signs, anything that the police are going to deal with. If you ask me, and we had some time, I'd give you half a dozen testimonials from some of the other villages across Ontario where they've saved the life of a child. And that child has been able to come back to the fire and the police and the investigators and say, "What I learned at the Safety Village allowed me to protect myself and my family." You know, we've had children rescue their siblings and their parents from burning houses because of what they've been taught at the Safety Village. So also, they've done some of their internal classroom training with fire and the police. They have an opportunity to go outside into the village, the miniature village itself. You'll see that little motto on the bottom. "Tell me, I'll forget. Show me, I may remember. Involve me, I will understand." This is used by every Safety Village in Ontario. And that's a slogan that we all stress. And again, it's that hands-on involvement. If you can involve a child, they will understand what they're doing. When we ran our Super Safety Days in October, we actually went to the schools afterwards and talked to the principals and the teachers, what kind of feedback. We needed that information. You know, are we on the right track here? The accolades were outstanding. We could not believe how well received this particular program is. We have a lot of people waiting right now. I had a call at supper time last night from a school in Winghamms, and "When can I bring my kids?" We will be touching Northern Huron, Perth, and Wellington Counties as well as Gray and Bruce. So our catchment area is fairly extensive. This was part of our program last October when we were doing our instruction out in the village. We have these little battery-operated jeeps. If you want to see kids smile, put them in one of these and let them go around the village. I can tell you, grade ones are much better drivers than kindergarten kids. But it was absolutely delightful, and we were lucky. We had some fantastic weather as well. So this is the layout of part of the village. It's all paved, it's lined. We've got street signs everywhere. We've got a traffic circle. This was mentioned to us by the police. If you're going to design this village, adults can't handle the traffic circle. What do we expect kids to do? So we need to start training them early. Again, these are just some of the features in the village itself. Hydro One, Westario Power are part of our sponsors. They put facilities on site. We sell a pad for them to build their facilities on. We can talk about various aspects of hydro danger and the safety related around that. We have found that we've brought some of the companies to site. That's the selling point. They get excited when they've had a chance to see it. I spent over a year with Westario in their boardroom, trying to sell them a mental picture of what the village looked like. Once we built and brought them down on site, they were on board the next day. We have a school host that some of you will be familiar with, Eva LaFleur. She was very much involved with community foundation Gray Bruce. And we were involved with them. They wanted a replica. This was the school host that Eva LaFleur was part of back in the early 1920s. And we had to replicate the school host that she attended. So it took us a while to find a builder, to have the windows in the right place and the bell tower in the right place. Local Hanover Lions Club wanted to be actively involved, and this was their centennial project. So we call that the Lions Town Hall. Service company, Hanover Chrysler, put a garage in. That's where all our jeeps are stored inside there and all of our scooters. We have a children's hospital. I mean, you can't, you have to have certain things in the village to make it realistic. The idea is to create a little tiny town, take Owen Sound or Hanover, Mount Forest, where I'm from, squish it into a couple of acres and create an environment that kids can relate to. So when they're out in the village, this is not something strange to them. So we put a little hospital in there. We just completed this children's chaplain. I was delighted to get this added to the village there last summer. We do have our own ambulance. This was donated by Bruce County a little while back. And Chesley, the fire department, last summer gave us their own replica fire truck to be on site. We have farm safety. It's another big component. We are in a rural part of Ontario here. And I thank, again, Brian and Warden-McQueen for the opportunity to speak at Gray County's Fire Safety Association meeting a couple of times, and quite a lengthy discussion. Anyways, farm safety is a major component. A lot of the other villages in Ontario are affiliated with more of an urban environment and would not have this component. So we have a number of apparatus associated with this. We have PTO shaft, we have some, an ATV talking about rollover. We have machines that have whirling blades, et cetera, so we can teach the safety aspect. These are, again, some of the facilities. This is inside of our little barn. And we had a couple of sponsors onboard in order for us to build this particular facility. Gray Bruce Farmers Week commissioned a mural 24 feet long. I just got this installed last fall. It's been sitting in Listowel for the last few years in the Trillium Mutual Insurance Building in their boardroom. I left a whole bunch of holes in the wall there a few weeks ago when I left, when I took this away from them, again, brought it into the village. Anyways, this is sort of the information that I circulated to you in paper. I just didn't, it's only a small tree. I had to cut down because there weren't that many pages, so I only gave you one. But there are about 7,500 children in Gray County. You know, minimal investment of a couple of dollars a year will allow us to provide instruction to these children. So normally, when we come to a council, and I've been to a lot of various councils and made presentations, we do generally ask for money. We know you're dealing with taxpayer money. We're at this position. We are excited to be able to get this program off the ground. We want to start on a full-time basis, starting in April. Marilyn and I have been interviewing police services personnel. We sent out a broadcast message to the fire prevention officers and all the police chiefs in Bruce and Gray. And I've got, yesterday had four calls from firemen saying, "Pick me, pick me." So we're ready to start at least a soft launch a couple of days a week in April. We have everything in place to get the program off the ground, but we need ongoing support. This has been a passion of ours for 10 years. We just renewed, and I know councillor Robinson was at the meeting. We just renewed our lease with the Conservation Authority. We have a 20-year lease program, but just because of legislation, we have to renew it each five years. So we're pretty excited to be there. We've invested a lot of time, energy. You know, we've done probably well over 200 presentations across Gray and Bruce, and we continue to do so on a regular basis. So, you know, we are here looking for support. There's an opportunity for each of the municipalities, to help us to make sure that your children, your grandchildren, my grandchildren are getting the best safety training they can. And the fact that the police services, community, and our fire departments all across Gray and Bruce are 100% supportive of this project tells us that we're not heading in the wrong direction here. The life of a child is precious. Trust me, I know. We look forward to working together to have this village in our community and your communities. We service all of Gray and Bruce with our program. And I'm willing to entertain any questions. Warden-McQueen.
Well, thank you, Al, and thanks for all the hard work and dedication that you and your team do with regards to the Children's Village. Just before I go to questions, there is some signage from Gray County, isn't there?
Yes, I'm sorry to include it here in this one.
Sorry about that. When we started looking for sponsorship opportunities, the street names went within a week. It was a no-sale item. People wanted to be recognized. Even locally in Newstead, the Colleen Lance Run for Youth, they entertained us and provided money from some of their runs. And they've been recognized with the street names. Some of our sponsors have too, and service organizations. So we're quite thrilled with that now. And I apologize and put the slide up this time. I was trying to cut down the number of slides. But yes, there is a Gray County line in the village.
And you mentioned a lot of Bruce County in there, so we'll just leave it at that. Councillor Desai, do you have a comment?
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much for the presentation. Terrific concept. My question, and I guess I see clarity on this, Mr. Warden, is this an after-school program? Or is it a summer vacation sort of a thing? What exactly is it?
Al?
No, this is during the school term. So this runs September right through to June. Teachers will book a class. It could be grade three class, and they want to be there to deal with street safety. They might want to be there to deal with internet safety. So they'll pick the safety program, their class. So it's Monday to Friday. Eventually, we want, some of the other villages across Ontario have expanded to the point where they're doing some weekend programming, they're doing some summer programming as well. Those opportunities are there. One thing the firemen have come to us and said is, "Hey, you have a fantastic facility. What about our seniors?" There's a lot of issues with safety, with seniors living alone in apartment buildings. We have the facility. We can bring a group of seniors in from Owen Sound, from Hanover, Durham, wherever the case may be, and provide that training in the evenings, weekends. Children with disabilities who may not be able to attend a regular school outing, we'll have an opportunity to bring them in again on weekends. We just had the fire prevention officer from King Carden talk to me yesterday. Can we run some weekend programming now? Yeah. You know, if we can open up that school seven days a week, we will do so. So it's geared to the school program. You know, the teachers book their class, they book the bus, they show up and we provide the training.
Okay. Any other questions or councillor Gamble?
Thank you, Al, for that presentation. I'm going to ask you a question, and I think you answered it the last time for me. Is the support from Bruce County is far superior to what we've given you from Gray? Is that correct?
Can I turn around, see if anybody's behind me? Okay. Financially, we've received a lot more active support from Bruce County. I'm talking about various departments. The fire department stepped forward with over $50,000 support. We have received support from individual fire departments. In Intertown here in Owen Sound, and I can't remember, Ayton, Newstead, fire departments individually have stepped forward to support our program. As recently as last year, we received another donation. Large-scale donations, yes, have come from the Bruce County area. And, yeah, I've met numerous times with the fire chiefs and been to Chatsworth OPP. There isn't anybody, I don't think, in the fire and the police services I haven't talked to. We just haven't had quite, you know, we were invited last week by Jessica to come to the fire prevention officers' meeting in Meaford. And that was, I called her up and said, "Hey, what are you doing? Are you full-time or not? I got a job for you." She indicated she's full-time, but "Come to our meeting." So we are getting the invitation to be there to provide updates. But we're ready to move. We're ready to move forward with this program. And if, you know, Gray County can step forward more financially, maybe we can take some of that money from Blue Mountain. Just wanted to let you know I was listening. I was listening, okay? But yes, answer your question, Brian. Yeah, and I don't want to embarrass anybody here at all, so.
Thanks, Al. Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Al, thanks very much. This is the second time I've seen the presentation. I was very impressed when, I think it was at the Farm Safety AGM, Mr. Warden, when I first heard Al. And it was, I continue to be impressed with your enthusiasm and your desire to help kids. So I would certainly hope that our county will try to financially contribute to the Children's Safety Village. Just a question. Have you had conversations, and what have those conversations been with the Blue Water School Board? Do you have any sense on the number of schools that would be willing to participate if this was up and running on a full-time basis?
Sorry. Yeah, we went to the trustees of the Blue Water Board and the Catholic Board when we first started. Because without their support, our question was, "Do you think this is of value in Bruce and Gray County? If you're not willing to support this idea, project's done right now, as of today." They were pretty excited by it. So individual number of schools, we do have a list. I'm sorry, I don't have that list with me. But we have a list of all the schools. We have a former teacher who worked at the Blue Water Board, is part of our Board of Directors, Jackie Travers-Thomas. I don't know if you know Jackie. She's part of our team. She's taught with Ministry of Ed for a number of years. Right now, she's lecturing at York University. A lot of that I'm going to throw onto Jackie's lap to make those contacts. But we have a list of all the schools in Bruce and Gray County. Also, we've mentioned that, and I forgot to mention, we have First Nations in our area as well. We do not want to have them not have the opportunity to participate. And a lot of you, especially where I am in Mount Forest, we have an extremely large rural Mennonite community. And I've had some preliminary discussions with our Mennonite community. And there's an opportunity. I mean, John and Brian will relate to how many buggies we have going up and down the street. We have an opportunity to expand this to a much larger group, especially when we look at the farm safety component. Long answer to your question. Can't tell you the number of schools, but we do have a list of all the schools in Blue Water, both the Catholic and the elementary programs. We've talked to the CAOs of both Boards of Education. We met with trustees. And, you know, we've had nothing but positive feedback. Other than the fact that they changed a few times over the 10 years. So we find ourselves going back periodically to have that discussion again. But with the calls that, you know, Marilyn's sitting on a book of schools that have been asking, "When can we come? When can we come?" And right now, like I said, we want to put our instructors in place, if I can, Mr. Warden. The original concept was the fire departments and the police came to us and said, "If you have a class from Chatsworth, we want to have OPP and fire from the Chatsworth community there to deliver the program." That's great. And that's how we envision this moving forward. As we've got closer to reality, we were lucky when we had Hanover Services there back in October. They didn't have a call-out. So over those few days that we were running program, there wasn't any call. But if they had got called away, we had no instructors. So our intent now is to have our own instructors onsite. We have to guarantee that there's going to be somebody there when the children show up. So we want some qualified police and fire.
Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Al, for that. Financially, how far away are you from being able to operate on a full-time basis?
Okay. Yeah, we're ready to launch in April. You know, we have funding to decide that we're ready to get together two days a week. We're looking at Tuesdays and Wednesdays to launch this program. So we already have an individual available for police services. And right now, we're just sort of taking our list of interested candidates in the fire services area. We cannot wait any longer to get this program off the ground. It's just too exciting. There's too much interest in it. So we are ready to go with the finances that we have in place to start this year. Eventually, we want to move to five days a week. But initially, we want to start with two days. And so we're looking at sort of a Tuesday, Wednesday launch, starting in April, run right through to June. We are in discussions with some other education organizations to run some summer programs. We met just last week with an individual that wants to run a month of summer program for children. And we can use, might as well not have the village sitting empty. So we are ready to start now.
Okay, Al, any other questions? Does that sort of answer your question, councillor? Any other questions? So just go back to that tagline about the kids. I forget how I asked you that once before.
Tell me, I'll forget. Show me, I may remember. Involve me, and I will understand.
Well, thank you then for your presentation, and certainly a sought-out endeavor on you and your group that keep up the good work. And maybe there'll be a bit more Gray County there. Thank you. At this time, we'll take a few minutes, we'll take a break. Welcome back, everyone. And we'll proceed on our agenda with regards to consent agenda. Oh, sorry. Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. While it's still fresh in my memory, if I wanted to, you know, bring forth, would it be through a motion if we wanted to support a funding request from the Sawgiin Valley? Or is that something we can do right now, or should it be a notice of motion?
I will go to my Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk?
I actually had a conversation with Mr. Leach just a few minutes ago and suggested that he send a formal letter of request in to counsel for their consideration.
So is that including a used snowplow? I saw some used ambulances from Bruce County there. Maybe, I don't know if you have a way of shrinking those old snowplows down, Pat? Anyway, I just heard Bruce County a lot there, so. Counselor Mackey?
Sawgiin Valley sends in the request, then the request would show up on a package, and so no notice of motion requirement is needed. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarity. All right. Any other comments to that, our last delegation then? Sorry about that. All right. Moving on then, we have a consent agenda in front of our committee of the whole. Are there any of those items which should be pulled? If not, can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Burley? Counselor Compass? All in favor? Let's carry it. All right. For items for discussion, this is with regards to Gray Roots. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Millen? Sorry. Counselor Millen? Counselor Desai?
Savannah's going to present.
Savannah's going to come up forward. That'd be great. Welcome.
Mr. Warden?
Counselor, oh, yes. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to, at this point, say that I have an interest in this item, so I will not be participating in it nor voting.
Thank you for that clarity. Savannah?
Thank you very much, Warden and counsel. Here today to talk about militaria purchase for Gray Roots Permanent Artifact Collection. The report was written by Sim, but she's not able to join us today, so I will hopefully take you through it just as well. Over the past two to three decades, we've had a local historian who's been very active at Gray Roots, and he's been collecting World War I and World War II militaria accumulated, including badges and medals, insignia, and identification tags that were issued to and owned by late Gray County veterans from all across the county. He's already donated a number of these items to Gray Roots specifically, but there are a couple that he's got financial investment in for the collection, so he's asked if we could purchase those directly from him instead of being a direct donation. And Sim, looking through the collection plan and looking through the purpose and the mandate of Gray Roots, sees real value in the collection that he's been able to put together because of the broad range of recognition from across the county, and it does fit directly with the collection's plan. So she did reach out to Sidnum Auctions to get a fair market value and make sure that the correct number we had is what we are going to present today. And they've posed that that number is $3,827. We do have a reserve from collections specifically, and that was from an insurance settlement for losses related to the 2001 storage building fire. And as of December 31, 2019, that reserve totaled $24,800. We haven't touched that reserve since 2010, when dollars were taken out to work on the Robert Bell steam tractor engine as part of the museum's living history collection. So we have included a list of the items for consideration, and there were also photos attached for some of those items in the report. Knowing that we have a budget of $2,500 for acquisitions throughout the year for Gray Roots specifically, that is included in the 2020 budget, but this is above and beyond that, and it was something we did not expect to come our way, which is really exciting. But we didn't want to make use of that budget that we do have, because throughout the year, Sim will be purposely collecting items that fit within that budget. So we thought it best, instead of coming back with a whole lot of smaller reports down the road, if we could fund this out of the reserve and then leave that $2,500 that's currently in the budget to be able to collect those items that she knows she'll be going after this year. So that's why this request is coming right after you've passed a budget, to be able to make that purchase happen. So that's all the detail of half of that. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Thanks, Savannah. Yeah, Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think it's important that we support this resolution. I think it's very timely, given that just last fall, we dedicated the new monument to the fallen and remembered people that participated in those conflicts. Certainly, Gray Roots, the objective is to display and remember the history of Gray County, and I believe this is a very unique opportunity to purchase more of that, and we need to act on it as the iron is hot, I think. The opportunity's there, and I thank Savannah for bringing this forward lest we forget.
Thanks, Counselor Millen. And I remember about 12 years ago, you and I sitting at the Lost Soldier Memorial in Ottawa, having a long conversation about how we felt and very much carried through. Any other... Counselor Ian Body?
Thank you, Warden McQueen. The answer is absolutely yes, or the vote will be yes. I'm just surprised that there isn't a budget for Gray Roots for such a small amount that it would just be automatic and not have to come to council. That's really my only question is procedure.
Savannah, do you have anything?
Absolutely. The budget that we have every year is 2,500, so it doesn't seem like a lot, but we're starting to look at what other museums are doing as part of our restructuring and our rethinking. And there isn't really a standard anywhere. We have some museums that have $0, others have a lot more than we have. So we will review and look at what that looks like, but right now, 2,500 has seemed to work. Looking back over the past five years, we've ranged anywhere from 1,500 to 3,700 for the acquisitions annually. So we typically hover right around that $2,500, but this is just a special circumstance that we didn't want to miss out on.
Well, thanks for that. And Counselor Desai?
Oh, I had two questions, both of which were answered, so I'm going to have to think on my feet. But my question through you, Mr. Warden, is how long has the... Okay, I'm still on. How long has the 2,500 been in place? And clearly, it's not being adjusted for cost of living. So how long has it been in place? And second, Savannah mentioned the review that's coming up. Can we get a timeline on the results of that review?
Savannah?
I haven't looked back beyond the five years, but from 2015 to today, it's been $2,500 has been the budget going forward. And I talked to Sim this morning about your question surrounding what do compared museums have, and she's going to start reaching out as early as next week to find out what that looks like. But as part of our internal strategic plan review, getting ready for 2021, and we do a formal plan, that's all, it's starting now, that we're starting to look at that structure.
Okay. Any other questions then? Counselor Mackey?
Thank you. And I certainly support this request. Just a question, Savannah. Do we have, like, the articles that you're wanting to purchase now? Do we have these articles already, or are these new articles to the collection? And the second question would be, is there any collaboration between Gray Roots and the Billy Bishop Museum in sharing artifacts back and forth?
Savannah?
Those are great questions. As far as we know, as far as I know and from talking to Sim, we don't have these in the collection. These are brand-new. We do have other militaria, but not these specifically. So this is a... As far as we know, as far as I know and from talking to Sim, we don't have these in the collection. These are brand new. We do have other militaria, but not these specifically. So this is a well-curated collection that he's put together already at this point that will fit directly into the collection that we do have. And in terms of working with other museums around, there has been bits and pieces of that, absolutely, over the history of Gray Roots, but we're very seriously looking at that, because through economic development and tourism, our working groups are a big deal for us, and working with our member municipalities and all of the other folks that we have in the region. And it hasn't happened as formally with Gray Roots, so that's something that we are looking at right now. How do we create that better connection to our local museums, but also those in the regions who are run by counties, because there's a lot of similarities between what we're doing.
Great questions. Any other questions from county councillors? I see you have Year in Review also here for everybody to peruse through. So seeing there's no other questions, then all in favor of the motion. That is carried. Thank you, Savannah. All right. Moving forward then with Item B, with regards to paramedic services. You wish to move that, Councillor Robinson?
Yes, Warden.
And do I have a seconder? Councillor Patterson. Kevin, welcome.
Good morning, County Council. Good morning, Warden. So today, this presentation's on the Paramedic Services Modernization Update. So just that the information received for our consultation in regards to modernization. So this started initially back last April. We were notified through AMO about potential restructuring of paramedic services in regards to restructuring as far as dispatch centers and paramedic services, potentially restructuring from right now 52 down to 10. There wasn't much information for about a month, and then we started getting more information that they walked that back a bit, and what they're looking at doing is more or less modernizing or strengthening emergency health services. So the ministry is committed to modernizing and strengthening emergency health services to help with hallway healthcare. In October, it was announced that they would be holding consultations, and they named Jim Pine as the lead. He's CAO from Hastings County. And there are also Allison Blair, who is our Deputy Minister, and David Williams, who is the Provincial Medical Officer of Health, that they'd be beginning these consultations. So when you look at emergency health services, it's beyond paramedic services themselves. It includes our dispatch centers, it includes the ministry, it includes our base hospital, and the big part of this is our dispatch center. And across the province, I believe there's about 22 of them. So in November, the ministry released two discussion papers, one for emergency health services and one for public health. And you can see that as one of the appendix is the original version with the report. The ministry, they're looking for submissions by March 31st. It was February 10th, but due to coronavirus, they've pushed that out somewhat. The in-person consultations are underway. Jim Pine, I think they've done six so far, there's at least another eight to go across Ontario. They hosted one in London, which our CAO Kim was able to attend with me. We attended that one and gave some feedback. The interesting part of this is the recommendations and the findings of consultations be provided to the ministry, but there won't be a final report written. They say that they're giving information to the ministry as they go, and there will be a summary of findings and feedback through a webinar, but no final report. So that when you look at the discussion paper and what they're looking to strengthen and improve, they're looking at the dispatch technologies that are outdated, lengthy offload times, particularly in the larger urban areas, delays in transporting medically stable patients, and that's the non-urgent, which is a problem for us, rural Ontario and other areas. I guess urban too, but there's a lack of providers in the rural areas. Lack of coordination amongst emergency health service partners, need for innovative models of care that improve care, and then health equality for the services, not just in one area, but across the province, rural and indigenous communities. One thing that's important is that there is nothing, initially, we were wondering about whether the municipality lose control over the paramedic services, if it be privatized, those type of things. There is no information that suggests that right now, and from what we're hearing, it doesn't sound that that's the route that they're going to take. And as far as possibly consolidating services into smaller amounts of services, it doesn't sound like that's going to happen either. So there's nothing concrete, but that just doesn't look like the direction that they're going right now. As far as what I can hear, it sounds like it's going to be status quo, but it's too early to say for sure. So for us, as Gray County Paramedic Services, we've been fortunate since the download. There's been heavy investment in paramedic services, in maintaining and actually improving response times when there's been significant increase in emergency calls. We worked at programs for safety in the ambulances, for power load, power stretchers, technology, the vehicles, the training, the skill set of the paramedics has moved forward significantly. So as a service, there's been quite a bit of investment and quite a bit of improvement since the time. Although it did ring true when we were sitting last week, we met with the Association of Paramedic Chiefs and Allison Blair and Jim Pine. It has been 20 years since the download, and to really take a good look at it again, it never hurts to actually do that. So it's actually a bit of a positive light to this, is to take a really good look at it. As far as like trying to improve the system, Gray County has done a lot with our community paramedic program, e-notification, sharing of information. As it stands today, we are one of the few, actually the only one in the province that's sharing information out to the province. There's more coming on board, but we've been doing it now for over a year. We do mental health urgent response team notification, vulnerable patient identification, referrals to 211 for social economic support and to the LIN. And we're heavily involved with community working groups, you know, for instance, the Drug and Alcohol, Opioid Task Force, those type of things. So there's a lot of work going on locally that we offer, you know, good advice, I believe, to them when we go to these tables. So just, you can read our response, it's attached to the report, but just a summary of priorities is to maintain a local municipal framework, continue with the status quo, but to ensure that we restore 50/50 funding, because we have moved away from that. And we wrote in there to even suggest that it be based upon the actuals versus the year before budgeted would help with the pressures. Timely implementation and supportive communications center program. Really, a lot of the modernization has got to fall around dispatch center, it needs to modernize. They need to, as far as implement the better decision-making for calls, when they triage those calls, the technology to dispatch the calls. We can do it quicker and faster and get more reliable information to the paramedics. They need to be able to have almost a secondary triage where they can defer people other than to the hospital and other than the paramedics, and maybe refer them to like the telehealth, those type of things for people that, just they don't know where to turn right now, but the only option right now is to send an ambulance. Embrace support for alternate destinations and new models of care and treat and release guidelines. We've been talking about this for numerous years, about expanded scope for paramedics and be able to do more in the community, similar to what our community paramedic program serves. Integration with our paramedic services with Ontario Health teams and how we fit in that picture. And I'll show you a picture at the end of this, how this may look. Ensure that we maintain base funding for our programs in the urban areas. Dedicate offload nurse makes a big difference when they're showing up these hospitals, that the nurses can take care of the patients that are paid for by the larger services so they can get their ambulances back on the road. We do see some of those benefits when we go with transfers into those urban settings. Our community paramedic program, you know, to be able to take those programs, they should be 100% funded and be able to expand those so we can move them across the county. And then also somehow look at non-emergency transportation services right now to somehow fund those 100%, and the providers right now to regulate them to ensure it's equal and safe treatment and transfer across the province. To be partners with the unions, to ensure that they're aware of the changes, that we ensure that they're kept up to date with the information and they're part of the solution to have buy-in, and make sure that we have appropriate training for paramedics. And then one is a coordinated approach for paramedics, and again, all emergency services for operational stress prevention and early intervention. And then also, a lot of the stuff we've done in these programs on our regular job, and if we're going to, you know, move ahead with modernization, is to provide funding to actually assess and implement programs that, you know, that work and there's evidence to do it, but to have some funding to be able to put those programs in place and appropriate resources.